We'll call this meeting to order. It is two o'clock. If we may have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Present.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Present.
Thank you.
Will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zeus symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Our land acknowledgement, this Santa Fe County building is located on the traditional homelands of the Tewa people at the place known as Oga Poge, White Shell Watering Place. We honor the land itself with all those who have deep connections to the lab, the land. The Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with all neighboring communities and all people who remain stewards of this land throughout generations. May we have a moment of reflection, please. Tyler Dominguez. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Let us take a moment to focus on the work ahead of us today. Being ever mindful of our decisions and in the best interest of our community, we take a moment of silence.
Thank you. I would also like to ask for a moment of silence for Tony Lopez of Lopez Roofing, who was a standard in Santa Fe. He was a gentleman, a person who worked very much on community events and supported community members in so many ways they're not countable. If we may have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. May be seated. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda as it's been provided?
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante. I'll do my best to emulate Manager Schaefer's tone and direction. There are no recommended changes to the agenda as presented today. I would just note that the initial agenda for today's meeting was posted last Wednesday and the amended agenda was posted last Friday afternoon at approximately 2:23, which is in excess of 72 hours of today's meeting as required by the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Lisa, Commissioner Kakari Stone, you had a change to the agenda?
Yes, Chair Bustamante, where you see it appropriate. I did want to present an award that the county received in conjunction with Aguafia Village and this is also on both of our behalf as we led the proclamation of disability access. But I wanted to present it to the county as well as Public Works because it's around social. When would you like me to do that, at my updates or when's appropriate?
It would be appropriate during updates from the commission. Thank you. Also, in the executive session, we have listed that there would be deliberation on the Rancho Viejo project. And I want to do a check with the commissioners that we had decided not to deliberate on that matter during the closed session today. Is there anyone who wants to still discuss that during executive session?
No.
Hearing none, that will be struck from the agenda. We will not be deliberating on the Rancho Viejo solar project during closed session.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion if you'd like to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion to approve the agenda, the agenda as amended. Do we have a sec, by Commissioner Green, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of meeting minutes. Request approval of the July 8th Special Board of County Commissioner meeting minutes. Do we have any changes to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Second set of meeting minutes. Request approval of the July 8th, 2025 Board of County Commission meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those minutes as they've been provided or do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kakari Stone. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration of Commissioner Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Other Items. These are action items, resolution, supporting the 14th Annual Neighbor-to-Neighbor Fund Drive in coordination with the Food Depot. And this is cosponsored with Commissioner Hughes and Commissioner Camila Bustamante. Commissioner Hughes.
Yes, thank you. I won't read the resolution because it's pretty self-explanatory and I think we all realize how important this is. This year especially when food cuts, SNAP benefits cuts, other things. So, and it's important to recognize that the Food Depot does an excellent job of getting everyone fed as possible they can. And so we just need to encourage everybody to donate a little bit of cash to them.
Thank you. And if I may speak also, the Food Depot has done an amazing job of serving those in our community who may go without food if the program didn't exist. I will also thank the Connect Program for the work that it does to connect people who don't have access to food to the Food Depot. That being said, the other thing that is very important to me is that the food that is provided to our community members in need is that it's healthy food. And that's something that we've been able to assure through the Food Depot. So we just ask that people support this initiative and we continue to do the good work. As Commissioner Hughes stated, now that SNAP will be cut and there will not be federal dollars coming in, we know that 75% of that burden now sits on local counties. That being said, initiatives such as this really support those individuals who will not have access to food. Are there any other commissioners who would like to speak to this matter? Commissioner Green.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. First off, I am in support of this. I do want to be clear of two things. First, my wife serves as a board member of the Food Depot and she is not compensated in any way. She supports the Food Depot in her volunteerism over there. But I also, myself, my wife, and our business also donates a portion of our proceeds and markets for the good works of the Food Depot and are in full support of their work. Really impressed with what they do. Their service area is way beyond Santa Fe County, but they do amazing work in Santa Fe, Espanola, all the way up to the Colorado border. They are the food bank for our region and deserve our support. So thank you commissioners for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much.
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, and I think it's important, that the county staff is providing parking space for their trucks and that was a big help to them. So I'm glad we were able to do that.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners who'd like to speak in appreciation for this resolution? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
I just want to thank Commissioner Hughes and Commissioner Bustamante for sponsoring this. And food is a determinant of health, both from birth to aging and death. And I think, you know, it also determines people's educational level. Speaks to the importance of nutrition in terms of students being able to study. And I think we're going to see quite a bit of an increase in hunger and groceries coming up. And so I just really want to thank you. And, you know, this is a SNAP and was, is part of the civil rights movement and the war on poverty. And we're seeing everything being attacked and dismantled. And I just want to recognize that at the local level, we're, we have the opportunity to hold the line. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kakari Stone. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, I just want to thank the commissioners for bringing this forward. The Food Depot is a very professional, impressive organization and we are lucky to have them in our community.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, comments from the commission, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution supporting the 14th Annual Neighbor-to-Neighbor Fund Drive in coordination with the Food Depot.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. May we have a resolution number, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. That resolution is 2025-087.
087. Thank you very much. We now approach the consent agenda. And at this term, I'd like to ask if there are any items from the consent agenda that the commission would like pooled to discuss independently.
Well, then I will move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a sec, from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been approved.
Madam Chair, there was a resolution on that.
Yes.
So item 4F is 2025-088.
088. Thank you. On to appointments and reappointments, requesting approval of recommendation of County Resident Flavion Mark Lupinetti for reappointment to the City of Santa Fe's Library Board. Hi, Amber. Thank you.
Hello. Chair and Commissioners, I'm here today to request the reappointment of Mark.
Excuse me, I think you're microphoning.
Sorry. I'm here today to request the reappointment of Mark Lupinetti, one of Santa Fe County's representatives on the Library Advisory Board. The board consists of seven members, five of whom reside in the city, two of whom reside in the county outside the incorporated boundaries of the city. The city resident member shall be appointed by the mayor with approval of the majority of the city council. The county resident shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice of the county commission and with approval of the majority of the city council. This item being presented today to the board has been recommended by the mayor and the city council to have Mark Lupinetti hold the seat. There were no other interested shows for this seat. And he is eligible for a second term. Mr. Lupinetti has served the county with dedication during his first term, actively supporting the mission of the Library Advisory Board, enhance library services, access to the community engagement. And he has been consistent advocate for improving resources for the residents and strengthening the partnership between the county and our public library system. So I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Baca? Commissioner Green.
Sorry to put you on the.
More statements regarding the matter.
First off, in support of this, but I have a question. I've heard in the past that the city's been asking for support for the libraries from the county. Was there any communication to this in that request recently? Or is that just a legacy issue that we've been, we heard years ago?
That I am not aware of. I can go back and ask, but that was not one of the points of communication with the city on this issue.
Well, if they're not asking for it, then maybe they, they figured it out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Well, I, since Eldorado has its own public library, I looked at the public library funding and we do provide a little bit of support to the city. We might want to increase that next year.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, any other comments? Is Mr. Lupinetti available?
Here, no.
Are there any other comments regarding this matter? Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mark Lupinetti to the City of Santa Fe's Library Board.
I second the motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Amber Baca. Item B, 5B, request appointment of Santa Fe County Representative to the City of Santa Fe Planning Advisory Committee, the PAC, for the Santa Fe Regional Airport Master Plan, County Manager's Office, Leandro Cordova.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the City of Santa Fe is initiating the preparation of a master plan for the Santa Fe Regional Airport and has invited Santa Fe County to appoint representatives to serve on the Planning Advisory Committee. Staff recommends the appointment of Herbert Foster, planning team lead in the county's growth management department. Mr. Foster will be supported in his representation by Public Works Department staff, principally Ryan Ward for Roads, Fleet, Solid Waste, and Traffic Issues, and Travis Soderquist for utility, as the Utility Division Deputy Director. The background is in the memo and I stand for any questions and recommend at this time appointing Mr. Foster, who is in the audience, if there's any questions for him.
Thank you very much. Mr. Foster, would you like to say anything to this matter? You're not obligated to. It's just up to you. Unless anyone has any questions of you. Anyone? Commissioner Green?
Not a specific question, but thank you for serving in this. I would put a request that, that there are regular reports to us. I know lots of people that are interested in this and I get questions about the city's airport periodically. And I can imagine that both Commissioner Kakari Stone and Commissioner Bustamante are interested as flight paths take them over their districts pretty extensively. So if there become conversations about that, having some report or regular discussion that you learn on our behalf, that you're able to, to brief us on that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? I would like to make this a similar request and they do have a complaint. I would like to make this a similar request, and they do have a complaint number for residents being a part of the community of Los Cienegas, and when expansion was being deliberated by the mayor and city council a while back, there was usually representation from the community of Los Cienegas, and it has moved forward in a manner that has made it most acceptable for the airport to be present. And I'm wondering if Mr. Foster would be the point of contact for the county if there were any issues. I'm apt to get some of those calls myself, but if there were issues or concerns, would it be through Mr. Foster, or would you like anything, if anyone were to ask? I'm prepared to take that to the manager Schaefer and have it work accordingly, but I would just like to know, because it would be a very brave position that Herbert Foster would be in.
Madam Chair, I think that would be appropriate, but as you mentioned, if you also want to include Manager Schaefer or myself, we'd be happy to assist Mr. Foster in those concerns.
Okay, so then I would make the recommendation that people should just let me know if anything happens, that they're not able to make their complaint through the city complaint line. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Not hearing any, I'd like to make a motion to approve Herbert Foster as the representative from the county for the City of Santa Fe Planning Advisory Committee for the Santa Fe Regional Airport Master Plan.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, I've made the motion, second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous action item, one item today, resolution to establish a community organization for the communities of Tres Rios, Las Campanas, and West Teno Road. Joseph Scala. And Mr. Scala, I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge your presence right now, as I didn't know who you were this morning when you were putting a post up on a sign for the Los Cienega Valley Association, so thank you, and I apologize for that.
No hard feelings, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. The communities of Tres Arroyos, Las Campanas, and West Teno Road are in the County Commission Districts 1 and 2. The Sustainable Growth Management Plan defines these communities as contemporary communities which have been developed through land subdivisions and master plans. Since summer of 2023, staff has been helping community members establish a new CO, a community organization, to formally represent their communities. As defined in the SLDC, a CO is a new or pre-existing association or organization that is recognized by resolution of the board to represent a specified geographical area within the county. If recognized by the Board of County Commissioners, a CO is granted a range of rights and responsibilities outlined in SLDC Section 2.2.2.5. Notable rights include the right to receive notice and provide written recommendations for any discretionary development application pending within the geographic area designated in the resolution of the board recognizing the CO, or notice of any public hearing or public meeting concerning such application, legal standing at quasi-judicial hearings for such applications, and the right to participate and make recommendations in the development of a community strategic work plan, studies, capital improvement plan, infrastructure capital improvement plan, public improvement and assessment districts, and levels of service for community infrastructure and services. A key milestone in this effort has been supporting community members in establishing the new Northwest Santa Fe Community Association, or NWSFCA. Unlike other COs in the county, NWSFCA's membership is largely composed of homeowners associations, such as Las Campanas Master Association and Sundance Ridge HOA. Despite having members across multiple census-defined communities and each HOA having their own covenants, they share common concerns and want to have a unified voice in county matters. NWSFCA is specifically interested in the following issues and topics: land use and development, conservation, preservation, wildfire preparedness, road access, environmental issues and impacts from the Santa Fe Regional Airport. The Northwest Santa Fe Community Association has applied to be a CO representing the communities of Tres Arroyos, Las Campanas, and West Teno Road. Following a thorough review, staff have determined that the Northwest Santa Fe Community Association CO application, which is Exhibit B, is complete and meets the requirements outlined in the SLDC. Staff therefore recommend approval of the application through adoption of the subject resolution, Exhibit A. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Scala? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Scala. Just sort of a curiosity, looking at the proposed, the boundary map, Exhibit C, and it seems like an individual household, the Pierce household, is being represented. Could you just explain for our enlightenment how that, that seems anomalous? I'm not contesting it, I'm just curious about it.
Yes, so I believe you're referring to Susan and Roger Pierce. Commissioner Johnson, I believe that these, this family, this household wanted their HOA, Mark Hayden could perhaps speak a little bit more to this, wanted their HOA to join the CO, but their HOA opted not to, and so they joined themselves, because they would like to receive notices about new developments.
So, sorry, if I understood you correctly, they are part of an HOA, their HOA opted out of it, but they wanted to be represented by this bigger organization. Is that accurate?
That's from what I recall, that is the case, because essentially what the CO seeks is a noticing system for developments happening around the county.
Okay.
Mark Hayden can speak a little bit more to that.
Sure, we have a 345 and a 5.
Madam Chair, board members of the commission, Mark Hayden, the HOA president of Aldea de Santa Fe, and we started this process about two years ago, and initially had a wide net cast and had about 20 different areas come to our homeowners' association. We wanted to keep this as broad and flexible as we possibly could, and one of the questions was, can individuals be part of this organization? And lacking a no from the county, we said, well, sure, there's going to be differences within homeowners' associations, for example. Some people in the organization want something, some people disagree with it. We said, all voices should be heard and all voices should be represented. So that's why we took the position of allowing individuals to join.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. With that, so other individuals down the road, you know, presuming this is approved, they could also join in such capacity, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Additional questions? Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Yes, I just want to thank you for the work you've done with the community partners to put this together. I'd like to thank Mr. Hayden. I've met with HOA of Aldea, the HOA of Las Campanas, and several others, and I just want to say that I support this and I appreciate that you're coming together, because there are access road issues, wildfire, Caja del Rio, shooting range, a lot of issues that the shared community are concerned about, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. A question just about the boundary, in the sort of, I think it's La Tierra Nueva area, the far edge of La Tierra. I'm wondering how the boundary was set over there? Was there outreach done to that, to that area over there? That's a portion that falls into my district, and I know a bunch of people out there, and I don't know if they were contacted.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. As this, most of these efforts were done prior to my position at the county. I'm not entirely sure the extent to which outreach was done in that portion of La Tierra. Perhaps Mark could again speak to that issue as well.
Please, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, we would like to expand at some point, but this was the minimum. The county would like to start the organization, and so we said, let's put a stake in the ground, let's get the organization going, and we can expand, but we'd love to have La Tierra join us. Thank you.
Fabulous. So if this county can help with outreach in some way to make sure that some of the constituents over there know that this has been formed and know that they can join, because some people might say, what about me, and/or us, or whatever they're, however they want to say.
Commissioner, we would welcome outreach, and I'm happy, they can reach me at any time, and I'd be glad to talk with them.
Great, thanks for doing this. Yep.
Thank you. I have a question similar to that, but it's actually the flip side. I have stood in these chambers a number of times with one particular registered CO, and people have said, this is, this is a broad net for this particular boundary, and the CO that I've been with before, people have stood up and said, and they don't represent me. Has there been any controversy or stated concern by anyone in the communities that are represented here, or that this, wrong choice of words, counted in this CO that have said, you know, I don't want this to apply to us? Is there any? And we will understand, for the record, that there will be people within COs who will not necessarily agree with the, with the larger picture, but it is a broad area, there are a number of HOAs. I'm happy to hear that this has been a two-year process, so I'm sure people have been informed. But has there been any objection to this happening?
From what I've seen, Chair Bustamante, from what I've seen, there has been very little objection, so to speak. We've had several community meetings in Aldea where we, as you put it, cast a broad net to try to get as many participants participating as possible. There were some communities, such as Teno Road, who opted to form a registered organization rather than join this CO. However, under the auspices that they could, at some point, if they liked how things were going, then join the CO. So there's been a little bit of that discourse, but that's, that's about it.
As follow-up to that, there are some large privately-owned parcels. Were those community members contacted and approached regarding this matter, assuming that in the future they may have an interest in development and whether or not they're part of the CO would want to know about what is happening and what's being presented to us today?
Chair Bustamante, I am not entirely sure the extent of which there was outreach for those privately-owned parcels. Mark?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes, we reached as many people as we possibly could. If we didn't have somebody's individual name or number or email, the idea was that once we get a CO going, we would be on the map, we'd be on the radar, people would contact us, and we could add them at a later date. And also with regard to the question about this, maybe not unified representation, if there's people that do not want to be part of a unified answer or position, what our plan was to have a balanced view. If we had an opportunity to address the board, we would come and say, we have so many members that have this position, but we have other members that disagree, but we wanted to have a balanced representation.
I appreciate that. And with regard to the large parcels that may be developable in time, would you be confident in saying that you did contact all of the larger property, the larger land owners?
We contacted everybody we had when we initiated the process, but we would be glad to do it again if that changes or if there's new people that want to be part of us.
Okay, and if they want to not be within your area, no issue, question, concern?
No, ma'am. We have a list of all the contacts of people who we would be representing, so if they're not on that list, they would not have that position.
Okay, so the physical boundary isn't necessarily all-inclusive, it's more those who have signed up to the CO?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anyone?
Thank you.
Commissioner Kukar Stone?
Can I go ahead and make a motion, or is there more discussion?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for, to accept the resolution to establish a community organization for the communities of Tres Arroyos, Las Campanas, and West Teno Road.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion to establish the community organization by Commissioner Kukari Stone. We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentations. We have a presentation concerning the plan for public art at 240 Grant. From the Public Works Department, Robert Lambert.
Madam Chair, that previous item has a resolution number?
Thank you.
So 6A is 2025-089.
089, thank you. Mr. Lambert, please proceed.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I have a presentation, a slideshow. Okay. So I'm here to give you an update on public art for the 240 Grant Lobby. Next slide, please. Oh. So as a background, Resolution 201539 was going on during the construction of the administration building at 240 Grant, and that resolution allocated a budget of $100,000 for the procurement of public art for the beautification of the lobby. So in September of 2024, we engaged contemporary Spanish market artist Omar Gonzo to produce the three, the three trails for the staircase there in the lobby. It was installed as phase one of the process, so that was the initial amount of funding that we used. Secondarily, there were some concern about the planters at the bottom of the stairs, so in June of 2025, I had two Native American artists, Spooner Marcus and Adrian Wall, complete glass art installation for either side. That money actually came from Public Works and not part of this $100,000 budget, so that saved a little on the overall budget for us to put into the third phase. So the third phase is for a hanging artwork, a sculpture, to go in that bay of window, of skylights there in the lobby ceiling. We released a call for artists in January of this year, and it was to propose a sculpture for the space that told a story about the trails and maps of Santa Fe, but to be able to tell some, some of the non untold stories. So the artist was to receive $75,000 for their design, fabrication, and installation, and in order to review the proposals, we got three Santa Fe County employees who actually work in the building, a project manager from Southwest Studios, who is the architecture firm who actually designed that space, and then the public arts administrator from New Mexico Arts. So they were to serve on the committee to help select. At the close in March of 2025, we had eight proposals for consideration. They were supposed, they were juried based on artistic quality, engagement of content to the public, and the appropriateness to the site. The results of that round resulted in the identification of three finalists. We asked each finalist to put together a slideshow presentation, kind of showing the thrust of their work, delving deeper into their intentions and the details, both the visual, but also the content that they were hoping to communicate. So all finalists were interviewed via WebEx. I did interviews based on a standard battery of questions. It was very difficult to get all the committee together in one place. So I just did interviews with each one, asking a standard battery of questions, and we paid each artist $1,200 for their time and effort in both producing the slideshow and performing their presentation. We feel it's important to pay artists for their time. The selection committee was given the access to all of their presentations, and then they were given time on their own to score. The winner was William Cliff Vestiges of the road, of the roads. As you can see, there's kind of an illustration of it in the space. It's two pieces. The top piece that's closer to the ceiling represents the Camino Real. The bottom represents the Rio Grande Pueblo Trail, which is a Native American trail that was, that predates the Camino Real by hundreds of years. And so they kind of, when you're standing directly under them, there's almost like a Keystone moment where the two line up and you can see where the two maps kind of overlap. I believe everyone received the artist's presentation for the proposal, but I can answer any questions about content and intention at the end. There's a view of the Keystone moment there. Once the artist's contract is finalized, it's going through its turnstiles currently. I've got scheduled four studio visits as a terms, one of the terms of the contract, and the- artists will be reimbursed at every stage of the process so that we can maintain kind of contact and a feedback loop to find out, keep them on track, but also be able to offer our input. The anticipated date of delivery is November of next year. Questions?
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Lambert? Commissioner Green?
Thank you. Thank you very much for putting this together. Looks like a promising piece. I have a question about the three chandeliers or multiple chandeliers that there are lighting fixtures. Does this piece incorporate lighting at all?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green, we have, being in the Public Works Department, we wanted to leave it open for the artists. There was actually, one of the finalists wanted to incorporate the one chandelier into the artwork and install on either side. The other two artists that proposed for us to take it out. So we were fully prepared to take out that centerpiece. I'm not sure how much actual light that one piece provides in the bigger picture with the skylights over it. So we're going to, once we get closer to the time, we're going, Public Works Department will remove that light, and then we can reassess how and if we need to relight it in some other way to kind of supplement what's there.
Yes, either in incorporating it with it or making sure that the piece is lit properly. So, yeah.
And we'll be in touch with the artist as well regarding that. I'm sure he'll have his preferences, and he's pretty used to doing public art, so he'll have strong opinions, I'm sure.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Commissioner Kokari Stone?
I just want to thank you for your efforts, Mr. Lambert. I hope you love your job because it's really exciting to see this. And I know I'm not supposed to disclose the selection committee, but considering there were so many creative submissions, and they did get compensated, I'm wondering if we could create a postcard series or something with all the submissions and think about how to refurbish the efforts they made and the ideas, because they did tell a story in different ways, some more contemporary, some more traditional. So I just want to throw that out there as an opportunity to promote the art that did make it to the final, but could be something that we use.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, I agree. There's also going to be with this piece, I think there's a lot of content related to it that you don't gather just by approaching it in the lobby. And so there's going to be a production of a large number of didactic sources where you can see it from the side, but also at the Keystone moment, I'm even considering putting a plaque there that says, "Look up." So there's going to be an interactive nature, and I can see this dovetailing into kind of either have him have a series of cards, but then also have some for the other candidates as well, because they were all strong. There wasn't a bad choice in the bunch.
No, there wasn't. Thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Commissioner Kokari Stone, that is a beautiful idea. Thank you for that. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Robert, for your work on this. I know the artist, our daughters are friends, and go to elementary school together. I did have no hand in the selection, and just pleasantly surprised today to learn that. So I just wanted to congratulate the artist and you for your good work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. You can mention it to him at the next school pickup.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, I'm so glad to see this coming to fruition. I can't wait to see the art in place.
I can come back and keep you posted on progress with the artist, if you'd like as well, based on my studio visits.
Thank you. And I would just like to follow up and also thank everyone who submitted. Thank you for your managing the process, and congratulations to those whose work was chosen for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have matters from the county manager. Do we have the county manager online, or are you prepared to cover that, Elias?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Chair Bustamante, I'm going to take over the miscellaneous items. I have three to discuss.
Thank you.
I'll start with the AES public hearing reflection. We want to express our deepest appreciation to every department and individual who contributed to the success of our recent meetings. This was truly a remarkable team effort, and we are grateful for everyone's dedication and professionalism. Our sincerest thanks to Building and Development and the County Attorney's Office for their crucial role in ensuring the documentation and execution of the Board of County Commissioners' hearing procedures and processes. Their meticulous work laid the foundation of a smooth and well-organized series of meetings. A special note of gratitude is extended to Property Control and Facilities for the invaluable support, their efforts in keeping the lights past 10:00 p.m. I'm not sure if you're aware, the lights turn off at 10:00. And maintaining a clean environment throughout these three days were essential. We also want to acknowledge the hard work of our IT staff for ensuring our online platforms ran with minimal hiccups. The CMO personnel deserves special thanks for their expertise in managing unique technology needs, from online registration to the timekeeping dashboard that was used during the meeting. The safety of our constituents and participants was a top priority, and we are deeply thankful for the security provided by Risk Management, the Sheriff's Office, and the City Police Department. And finally, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to the leadership of all the departments and elected offices involved and the county manager's office personnel. Their tireless work behind the scenes of managing the many logistics and resources was pivotal to our success. Their unwavering commitment made this complex meetings look effortless. The second topic is the Sanofi County Fair. As you may be aware, you know, Sanofi County Fair was held from July 30th to August 2nd at the county fairgrounds, featuring livestock shows, indoor exhibits, family activities, and community events like the buyer's reception, livestock auction, and evening dances. While final attendance members are still being compiled, Public Works staff reports a strong turnout and 100 more entries than last year. Thank you to our Public Works team and our fair board, volunteers, and partners who made the fair a success. Special shout-out to our Public Works open space and property control crews. Brian, here. Thank you, Brian. And last but not least is our wildfire town hall set for Wednesday, August 20th. Sanofi County is participating with PNM and the City of Santa Fe to host a wildfire safety town hall on Wednesday, August 20th, at the Farmer's Market Pavilion in the rail yard. Doors will open at 5:00 p.m. with a panel discussion beginning at 5:30. The event will include informational booths and a panel of representatives from PNM, the county, and the city to share resources, answer questions, and discuss wildfire preparedness and safety. That concludes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elias. I was just brought to my attention that we had someone from the Food Depot who wanted to speak during the presentation of the proclamation for Neighbor to Neighbor. And I'm asking our attorney, it will be out of line of the agenda, we can wait till public comment, but given that it was an oversight from an item that has already happened, would it be appropriate to invite Ms. Bragel, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, to speak now?
Chair Bustamante, certainly you can recognize, as is your prerogative, anyone in the room relating to an agenda item, and I see that you're wanting to revisit an earlier agenda item, and that's permitted.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And my sincere apologies, I didn't realize that there were people here to speak on it. So if you could please approach the podium and provide your statement regarding the Food Depot and its participation in Neighbor to Neighbor Drive. Thank you. And if you will state your name, it'll be very helpful.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Bragel, and I'm the Communications Director for the Food Depot. And I have with me Mary Ferguson, who's one of our board members and the fundraising leader, our organizer for Neighbor to Neighbor. So we wanted to first of all say thank you so much for supporting Neighbor to Neighbor again, supporting the Food Depot, helping us with our parking, with the trucks. We're just so thankful to have such a strong partner in Santa Fe County and the commissioners. And really today, I wanted to make sure to also invite you to an event we're having in September, because Santa Fe County is really the main place that we have one of our premier programs, the Food Mobile, which we launched in 2021 during COVID. And it was our very first choice-based program. It's the Blue Bus. You're all probably very familiar with it. But we are trying some new things with that program. We just ordered two brand-new trailers, and we're having an open house during Hunger Action Month in September, so people can walk onto the new trailers, see how we're stocking the food, how it's going to be serving clients. And again, that program is going to be serving people, continuing to serve people in Santa Fe County. So I did bring some little invitations today for you all, just so that way they wouldn't kind of go through your email with all the other millions of emails I know you all get. And then I also did bring some information papers about SNAP, because I know there are lots of questions about the increase in need that's going to happen with the SNAP cuts and the 58,000 New Mexicans that are going to be affected pretty quickly from all those eligibility changes. But I really wanted to mostly say thank you for your support. So is it okay if I approach with someone, or do I give it to a certain person?
I would ask Sarah to please collect those, and we're grateful for that, especially the information that we will be able to share.
And then Mary is going to share just a word about Neighbor to Neighbor.
Hi, Mary.
She's relieved I'm not giving her my spreadsheet.
And I want to thank you both for your good work.
Thank you.
Thanks. We're very happy to be here, very happy to do the work that we do. I'm a volunteer, basically, but we have 117 groups that participate in Neighbor to Neighbor. Our goal, and they're far and wide in the community, everywhere from El Dorado up to Susquehanna, out to Las Campanas. Las Campanas is participating this year bigger than they have in the past. I'm very pleased. Working hard on Tano Road, a lot of the places you've mentioned, Aldea participates. We're, and then we have Candlelight and wonderful neighborhoods that have been participating for the last 14 years. But we've got 117 groups working hard, whether it's the seniors on bikes, or the socially responsible women, or book clubs. We have collected, our goal's 500,000, like I said, that's 2 million meals. That's really important that we hit this goal. And we've got, you know, we've just got great support, and it's because, and I'll say this, I'm a volunteer, I'm not an employee. I can't think of a more efficient organization or more effective in a critical area like food than the Food Depot. Every dollar feeds four people, every dollar. So, and you're right, they get a nutritious meal. They get nutritious food going into their trunks at distributions. And we're working every day, going up, well, five days a week, going up to the Colorado border and over to Texas, trying to keep the 42,000 people that are hungry in our service area fed. It's critical. So thank you very much for your support. If your neighborhood is not participating, happy to, it's easy, and I'm happy to do the work if you give me a contact person. So, yeah, it's a pleasure to work, volunteer at the Food Depot to serve the hungry people in the northern part of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Madam Chair, can I?
Commissioner Green would like to...
Thank you for coming, guys. Amanda, great to see you. Mary, thank you. You guys are some of the hardest-working people around, and sorry we didn't see you here earlier, but we've been doing this a lot for the last three days, so our apologies for being so tired, so. But thanks for doing this. Cheers.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, matters from the Commission and other elected officials. We will start with Commissioner Green.
Oh, boy. Just two quick things. One, we met with the Chupadero Mutual Domestic Water System to assist them in moving forward with a state program that will, at some level, be in partnership with Santa Fe County as we have a resolution to take over their water system at some point, and we have some Public Works projects that we've collaborated with them. This was a great opportunity for them to try to get some money to help with their mutual domestic project up there. Want to give out a shout-out to Leandro and to Amber, who went up there and gave me good backup and actually really led the meeting and just made me look good, so that was great. And then secondarily, for those of you that are keeping score at home, we've gotten a contract signed with the post office for Chimaio Post Office. It's taken a while. There's still some details to figure out, but we have a signed contract. And Leandro, thank you for getting that over that finish line, and I think there were some other folks at Public Works. Thank you, Brian, and everybody at Facilities to getting this to that point. The Chimaio community will be appreciative and probably is appreciative when they hear about this, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Well, just thank you for coming. And again, we should all support the Food Depot now more than ever.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
So I want to thank staff for really providing a professional setting for the hearings over the last three days, including today. Much appreciated. Appreciation sent to my fellow commissioners as well, and everyone that participated in those hearings. I attended, well, I'll go in this order. I had a meeting with Representative Shipansky about Canyata de las Alamos issues, an area that we share in common, and some coordination efforts with the Forest Service, which is the site of some trails that approach county, you know, jurisdiction and private property that have been, I would say, a complicated issue for a while now, and we are working with that community actively, and this commission has indicated support for their community I attended the North Central Regional Transit District meeting on the first. That board approved the application for a Spotlight Transit Award, which I think that we're well poised to win. We received information about a rider survey. Rider levels of the Blue Bus are rising since COVID, you know, year after year, and we discussed communication strategies, advertising strategies to inform people of the myriad services that the Blue Bus offers. We approved the proposed Los Yenega, Expanded My View, My Blue. Wow, sorry. It's been a couple days, huh? Expanded My Blue service, which is non-demand service to the Los Yenega area, that was approved by the Board of the NCRTD, and that includes a connection to, or that service area includes, newly includes, the county Adult Detention Center facility. So people being released from that facility will be able to also call on-demand service for My Blue. And we also approved a new union contract, a two-year contract, increasing the salary of the majority of employees by 4% and of CDL driver holders, driver's license holders by 7%, with increases by another 4% in fiscal year 2027. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you. First, I want to give an announcement that I participated, not with my Conero per se, but the National Latino Behavioral Health Association held their third annual conference in Albuquerque last week. It was three days. It brought over 550 participants. It brought over 550 participants nationwide. And it was over 550 participants nationwide. And I want to thank the county team and staff for participating, especially community services. We often get to see the management here at these meetings, but I got the opportunity to meet Tyler Raymond and Elias Rodriguez with the Community Services Department, their up-and-coming advocates in youth services. And part of the, a lot of the workshops really were focused on how do we heal and work with the next generations around trauma-informed care and treatment. I'd have to say the county is on the cutting edge, and I just wanted to offer that opportunity to give that announcement. Next, on Monday, I participated in the annual or monthly Aguafria Village meeting. And at that time, on behalf of the county and Aguafria Village, the disability awards took place on July 31st. And I'd like to ask Mr. Cordova and Mr. Snyder to please come up to the mic, please, if you don't mind. And also, I want to recognize each of my Commissioners here. Angelique Montoya Chavez, Eli Frescas Ivan Encinas, and others have awarded Santa Fe County, and let me read this. And Commissioner Bustamante, I'm going to ask you if you don't mind standing on behalf of the County Board in our chair, because it was also presented to our Board. The 225 awardees, Community Heritage Accessibility Award in the category for Santa Fe County and the Aguafria Historic Community. Santa Fe County and the Aguafria Historic Community are recognized for their efforts to preserve cultural heritage while expanding access for residents of all abilities. One of the oldest continuously inhabited communities in the region, Aguafria has worked to improve public infrastructure, walking paths, and gathering spaces to ensure elders, people with disabilities, and future generations can participate in civil and cultural life. This award honors a commitment to inclusion that honors the past while building a more accessible future. And one of their, this was designed, it's the ZIA, and it's the 225 Accessibility Award. And I want to present it in public here because they did honor and recognize public works, and the county particularly, with the Aguafria Trail, Romedal Park, for being very accessible. So let's keep being a model. And I'm going to present it to our Board Chair. And I don't know where we display awards to the county so the public can see. So I'll leave it up to the county manager's office to decide, or if there's a place for public works. But Chair, this is on behalf of the entire county.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. It's beautiful, and I would like to make sure we all, let's get a photo with everyone, including staff. Thank you. This is beautiful. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. It's beautiful. And I would like to make sure we all, let's get a photo with everyone, including staff. Thank you. This is beautiful. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for your solid attendance to both the parade and to the event at Aguafria. You really championed this, and it is a beautiful award that was received by the county, and we'll show it proudly in the trophy case. It was brought to my attention, and Commissioner Green had said his piece, and then Commissioner Hughes thanked the Food Depot, but he did not get to say his piece. So my apologies. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bustamante. And by the way, you're doing an excellent job of chairing all these meetings, so it's great.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention two things. Meetings coming up, August 18th, I'm meeting with the Spur Ranch Road Association to continue their application for adoption of the Spur Ranch Road. And then August 21st, I have a town hall in El Dorado to talk about projects out there. I think maybe I should move that ahead because I don't want to discuss. I don't mind explaining our decision when we've made it, but we can't discuss it. So I'm probably going to switch that, move that ahead a week or two for them. So that is El Dorado. Last meeting we had, there were more county staff there and people. However, this time, I expect there will be lots of people at El Dorado, regardless of which way we decide. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. And from District 3, I attended a San Marcos meeting with PNM regarding the power line that is being improved. The request had been to bury the line. As we move forward, and it just becomes more apparent, I hope that there will be more advocacy for burying lines as much as possible, given the fire risk. I think we've heard an awful lot about what sparks can do, and I think we're all pretty much aware of it, anyway. But that meeting lasted long enough to hear from the PNM representation to explain that the cost was more to bury it and that there are its own risks when one buries the lines. So we've heard these conversations, but it's very important that we're doing what we can to make sure that overhead lines are less in these dry areas, and that we're supporting our communities. Not to mention, the community mentioned that it is a scenic byway, as recognized by the United States government. That also being said, we have another power line that was noticed, that was in the news yesterday that we have worked on, and we have been a consulting party, Santa Fe County has been a consulting party, on the Los Alamos power line through the Caja de Rion. And the conditions and concerns did make it to their final PA, their environmental assessment that we had been working with, as well as the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, and a number of pueblos who had concerns as well. I will say, and I'm for the record, reading the document as it was provided to all the consulting parties was, and it sounds hyperbolic, but it's not. It was nothing less than insulting, and I will say that the pueblo members were the ones who pointed that out, because there were references to first contact with the natives. And it just, instead of encouraging an acknowledgement of, what's the word I'm looking for, a community that's integrated, and that the pueblos are their own part of our community, references to first contact sounds like something from the 1800s, and it was less than acceptable. The other references with regard to open space, any references to open space and any analysis of open space were in the interest of recreation and solely recreation. One thing that is incredibly important in District 3 are that there are permities. There are people who have now, for the generations that the federal government has imposed the requirement through the ahidoo to have federal right to use the public lands for grazing. Some of them are multi-generational grazers, and there was no mention whatsoever, though we had provided that information in advance. The final document had those references, and I believe that the first contact references have been modified, and that the use of the lands, the open spaces, for medicinal, spiritual grazing, the number of ways that the indigenous people of this community use that property were referenced somewhat more as an aside. And I think it just speaks of colonialism continuing. It's right where it is, and we can talk about when we were colonized, and I'll say, no, it just continues. And I hope that the voices of those traditional communities continue to urge themselves and each other to move forward and be heard, as our lives have not, the way of our lives has not changed as much as communicated in that document. That is it for my statement. Oh, and I will bring, if the Commission would like to hear it, the specifics that we integrated into the document. It was finally approved and announced yesterday, so I didn't have the final conditions that we provided, but I am amenable to doing that at the next meeting if that is. There will be follow-up meetings with the pueblos, and we have been invited to attend. And I will make sure that the representation is strong from Santa Fe County and the traditional communities that I have mentioned, the indigenous communities. Okay? All right. That is, anyone online, another elected official who would like to make comment?
Chair Bustamante, there are no elected officials online.
No elected officials online. Our next item of order would be matters from the county attorney. Attorney Boyd, we have removed item two deliberation on the application per the meeting this morning. We have one item on our matters for executive session. I will remind everyone that in executive session that we follow Roberts' Rules of Order, and we'll be conducting these meetings in an efficient manner. Thank you very much. And we will hear a motion to break for executive session.
Let me, before you read the motion...
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I just want to mention for Chair Bustamante that the authority for you all to enter into closed executive session to discuss item 11A1 on the agenda would be limited personnel matters, as allowed by Section 1015H2 of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. We have a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purposes described by Attorney Boyd.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes.
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Camila Bustamante?
Yes.
Thank you.
document. That is it for my, for my statement. So if they, oh, and I will bring, if the commission would like to hear it, the specifics that we integrated into the document. It was finally approved and announced yesterday. So I didn't have the final conditions that we provided, but I am amenable to doing that at another, at the next meeting if that is. There will be follow-up meetings with the Pueblos and we have been invited to attend. And I will make sure that the representation is strong from Santa Fe County and the traditional communities that I have mentioned, the indigenous communities. Okay? All right. That is anyone online, another elected official who would like to make comment?
Chair Bustamante, there are no elected officials online.
No elected officials online. Our next item of order would be matters from the county attorney. Attorney Boyd, we have removed item two deliberation on the application per the meeting this morning. We have one item on our matters for executive session. I will remind everyone that in executive session that we follow Robert's rules of order and we'll be conducting these meetings in an efficient manner. Thank you very much. And we will hear a motion to break for executive session.
Let me, before I, before you read the motion.
Oh yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I just want to mention for Chair Bustamante that the authority for you all to enter into closed executive session to discuss item 11A1 on the agenda would be limited personnel matters as allowed by section 1015H2 of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. We have a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purposes described by Attorney Boyd.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes.
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Camila Bustamante?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're back in session. We need a vote to go back into session. Does anyone want to make the motion that we are coming back from executive session and did not discuss anything?
Is our attorney here?
Oh, yeah, it's 3:45. I don't want any more flack than we're going to get.
Yeah. Well, he needs to tell us if I make the motion right. No, don't make that motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we come out of executive session and that nothing was discussed other than personnel matters as allowed by the statute.
I second that.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of executive session. We will go into matters from the public. And we have someone in the chambers who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for hearing my comment this afternoon. My name is Lucas Robbins, I live in El Dorado, and this year I graduated as valedictorian from Mandela International Magnet School. In about a week, I'll be moving to DC to attend Georgetown University, but today I wanted to speak with you all about one of the most impactful extracurriculars that I took part in during my high school years, and that is my service as a volunteer firefighter with El Dorado Fire and Rescue. I began volunteering with EFR as a junior member just 16 years old. I was not initially aware of the county fire department's junior member program. I discovered this program by approaching the El Dorado ambulance crew as they were getting lunch and asking if I could volunteer with them. From that point forward, serving with EFR has become a source of meaning and purpose in my life, often acting as a counterweight to my intense workload from school. In Santa Fe County, where the median age is nearly 50 years old, it can be difficult for young people such as myself to feel connected to our communities. Before I began volunteering, I disliked living in El Dorado, feeling it was simply a retirement community that I was stuck in. Volunteering with the county fire department provided me a deep, meaningful connection to my community that made my other extracurriculars pale in comparison. A common sentiment among my peers is that Santa Fe is not a very youth-friendly city. As a county resident, this issue is exacerbated by the lack of activities for young people outside of city limits. I serve on the city mayor's youth advisory board to help address this very issue. However, no solutions have been as impactful on my own sense of belonging as the opportunity to serve my community in such a personal, emotional way. In my opinion, the county's junior member program implemented across all volunteer districts is under-advertised, considering the extremely positive impacts that it can have on youth motivated enough to serve our communities. As the time comes for county bylaws to be revised, I highly recommend that the county fire department analyze how the role of junior member could be expanded and become better advertised and more accessible to a greater number of Santa Fe County's youth. Perhaps a city-county partnership could analyze the feasibility of implementing a similar program for the city fire department. The positive impacts of this program are worth celebrating, and they are certainly not just contained to my personal development. My service has also benefited El Dorado's district, providing another set of hands to respond to late-night and early-morning emergency calls. My exposure to emergency service work is the reason that this fall I will participate in Georgetown's Emergency Medical Technician Training Program and serve as an on-campus EMT with the college's ambulance service. My time with the county fire department has ignited a lifelong desire to continue serving my community wherever I may be, and it is my hope that many more Santa Fe youth can reap the benefits of this successful, meaningful service opportunity. Thank you all for your time and attention, and thank you so much for allowing young Santa Feans to participate in such an excellent service opportunity.
Thank you very much for your service. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak? Do we have anyone online?
Chair Bustamante, we did have one sign up by the name of Chris Michels. However, he is not on our team's online meeting.
Okay. We will wait a little bit. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. We have heard matters from the public, and now really what we have next is our public hearing that starts at 5 o'clock, which leaves an hour and 10, an hour and seven, 10 minutes, or another break. So, do we need a motion to break?
No.
We never have, but you know, we're killing time.
If you want to start doing it today, you can.
I think we're going to go ahead and stick with the model we've been using. Let's just go for, let's go for a break, and thank you, thank you so much. This gentleman, just because, and we're on break, but this gentleman showed up at a previous meeting and got caught in a shuffle and missed his opportunity to speak. And he served as a volunteer and has really graciously came right back, and we're happy to hear about a youth activity. Thank you. Take care. All right. Isn't that adorable?
Well, back to, back to feet on the desk.
Sweet.
Let's bring this meeting back into session. This was just a break, so we don't need to take a vote. We are now on item 12, Public Hearings, now at 5 o'clock. Case number 21-5011. Suerte del Sur LLC applicant, New Mexico Land Solutions. Nathan Monzanares, agent, requests a 36-month time extension of a previously approved Rancho Cielo Grande preliminary plat and final plat approval. We have Mr. Lovato who will provide us information. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission members. Staff has received a letter of concern in regards to this case, one in which the previous board and some of the board members on this commission have heard. It has to pertain to road access agreements and whatnot. We've determined that Santa Fe County staff has no authority on road maintenance agreements and having this applicant, particular applicant, provide some sort of funding towards that road maintenance agreement as each individual subdivision within this area has their own declaration and covenants of this. So I will be handing this letter out to you, just so that you have for your record.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, right now is a brief summary of how this came, how this case came before you. On October 21st, 2004, Santa Fe County Development Review Committee recommended master plan approval for 264 residential lots on 666 acres, 660 acres. And on July 12th, 2005, the Board of County Commissioners, BCC, granted master plan approval. On February 9th, 2006, the Extratoritorial Zoning Commission recommended preliminary plat and development plan approval. And on April 11th, 2006, the BCC granted preliminary plat and development approval in accordance with the approved master plan. On April 10th, 2007, the BCC granted an amendment for preliminary for 304 lots on 660 acres. One of the conditions of approval was that the off-site road improvements of Los Sueños Trail that extends north of the proposed subdivision to Las Campanas Drive be upgraded. On July 10th, 2007, the BCC granted preliminary plat and development plan approval for a residential subdivision consisting of 304, 304 lots on 660 acres to be developed in five phases. On March 13th, 2008, the Extratoritorial Zoning Commission recommended final plat and development, development plan approval for phases 1 through 4 consisting of 241 residential lots on 660 acres. At the April 8th, 2008 hearing, before the BCC, staff stated that the proposed subdivision is within accordance and within the approved master plan and preliminary plat and development plan and conforms with the extratoritorial subdivision regulations. Staff recommends final approval subject to applicable conditions previously imposed and final conditions, including modifications of condition number 15 regarding road maintenance agreements for Los Sueños Trail and condition 12 regarding the applicant paying 50% towards maintenance of La Vida Trail. On December 12th, 2022, the BCC met and acted on this case. The decision of the BCC was to table the case so the applicant could work out with staff to address the following issues. One, the need to provide paving and traffic control plans to allow staff to ensure compliance with SLD standards. Two, the need to amend the water budget and water delivery agreement to allow for anticipated accessory dwelling units. And three, the possible need for a variance request relating to width of the right-of-way for Los Sueños Trail. The applicant addressed those items and staff recommended approval therefore. On April 25th, 2023, the board reheard the case and reviewed the application and supplemental materials provided by the applicant. County staff's report, and having conducted a public hearing, found that the applicant was well-taken and a vote 3 to 1. Commissioner Green, not present, Commissioner Bustamante voting against, approved to the, to the subject request. On August 29th, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved a final order for the subject case. Staff recommends approval of the 36-month time extension of the previously approved Rancho Cielo Grande 12-lot residential subdivision on a total of 127.94 acres accessed via Las Campanas Drive, Los Sueños Trail, and La Vida Trail within Township 17 North, Ranges 9 East, Section 24, Commission District 2, per Chapter 5, Section 5.8.7 expiration of final plat and as per SLDC and as per the conditions referenced in the final order associated with case 215010. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I stand for any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lovato. Do we have any questions for Mr. Lovato? Commissioner Hughes?
Well, what exactly have they agreed to in terms of the road? Is that in the final order? To contribute?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, the agreement was that Mr., the applicant, sort of LLC would pave from Cloud March the entirety of his length of his subdivision, which included the affordable lot.
And any maintenance of the road upstream from him?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, there was no agreement on any of the other roads.
Okay.
Commissioner Green?
So is that portion that's on his property that is his responsibility? That exists currently, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green, that is correct.
So the improvements are just sort of being waited for, for the people that cross that. So this gentleman here, you know, theoretically lives on the other side of this and drives this all the time and said, wait a second, the developer promised improvements to the road. We expected it now, but they're asking for three more years.
Madam Chair, Commission, agreeing, that is correct.
Okay. Is the applicant willing to do that work now as a condition of this extension?
Madam Chair, Commission, agreeing, the applicant has agreed to pave the road along the entirety of his portion of the subdivision that he's proposing, as well as the affordable lot. He's also agreed to pave an, not his portion of the roadway, which is, falls within Los Sueños Trail and some of the other succeeding subdivisions. He has not agreed to that and they tried, he, the applicant, tried to work with surrounding subdivisions to get that agreement and they had no success.
Sorry, the, the portion that is on his property, he is willing to move ahead with?
Madam Chair, Commission, agreeing, that is correct.
Once, regardless, in the future, even if he has that obligation to help the other, the stuff that's off his property, there's no way that we can make them do that. We can just say that he's on the hook for it. But the stuff that is on his property, we can make him do.
Madam Chair, Commission, agreeing, that is correct.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Yeah, thank you. And maybe you covered this? This is the first time we're seeing this letter, right? What day was it submitted and to who, the land use administrator, okay? But what date?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, we received that on August 5th.
August 5th, so we're just seeing it for the first time now. So what's the position of the staff regarding the four arguments? Could you just tell us what points 1, 2, 3, 4, whether you agree or disagree? And who is RW Wilkinson?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, I'm not sure who the gentleman is. I'm assuming he's part of the Los Sueños subdivision. We do not agree with the conditions he's imposed or proposed as we have no way in forcing that.
Okay, well, again, we're just seeing it for the first time. So what is, what is his main arguments? Because I'm trying to just scan it real quick before we, can you outline?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, he, the gentleman who's, wrote the letter, the Wilson, he wants all the improvements done on, to access the proposed subdivision. He wants equal share paid for the existing roads that access through this, to the subdivision. In one in which I mentioned earlier that they tried to accomplish, but wasn't, wasn't very successful in doing so.
So he wants the developer to pay or the county to pay?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, he wants the developer to pay.
Okay. Yes.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, I just wanted to add that the letter was postmarked on August 5th. It actually didn't show up on my desk until, it might have been there yesterday. I wasn't there. So we have also not had a lot of time with the letter.
Okay. And do you have an idea who, Alexandra? Who is RW Wilkinson? Is he someone that lives in the area? I just want to know the position of where this is coming from, Willison.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, we are assuming he is a nearby resident.
Okay.
But we actually don't know.
And in your opinion, do you think it's worth contacting him? Get more, getting more context before we take a vote or do anything on this case? Or is it, it is evidence you just handed us, so?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, we don't have any leverage to make anybody do anything that's not in the code. And so it's an issue, but we can't solve it. I guess that's how I would leave that.
And then this letter's just basically bringing to our attentions someone that submitted it for, okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner? Nope. It's my understanding that this is the letter, the content of this letter is commensurate to the letter that was received the first time this was passed?
Madam Chair, that is correct. We received several of the same similar letters in reference to this and they all wanted the same logical, you know, fixing of the road. And while in a perfect world, it sounds doable and would be great, but we, we just don't have the, the means to enforce that type of environment.
Any other questions for Mr. Lovato? Hearing none, this is your district, Commissioner Green? Oh, it's Kokari Stone's district, I apologize.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to?
No, it's a public hearing, so we've got a, and should we? Sorry, Nicholas, Nate, you're here. Are you, do you have a presentation? Does he have a, the applicant?
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Madam Chair, I do, but I think John covered the history pretty good in his presentation. Do you want me to be sworn in?
Let's do that. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And thank you. Please state your name and address and that you understand you're under oath.
Nathan Monzanares, New Mexico Land Solutions, at 915 Mercer Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico. And I understand I'm under oath.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, as John highlighted, this area has had a pretty lengthy history. Ultimately, what we're asking for is a, a downzoning of the property. We're doing 11 market rate lots that range from seven and a half acres to 17 acres in size with one affordable housing lot that's two and a half acres. During the original approval of this, there was a lot of discussion with the neighbors. And we self-imposed that condition to pave our portion of Los Sueños and then a pretty good portion, I think it's 600 to 700 feet of off-site roadway to continue the pavement from Cloud March. And that's going to ultimately extend that roadway and make it paved, which is consistent with how that area has been built out. However, no one else was required to pave. We're willing to do it now because we understand that the area has grown, traffic's increased, now it calls to be paved. As the area continues to be developed, the hope is that pavement will continue to be extended and then ultimately finished. There, there's a, we're doing 300 and, no, I'm sorry, 3100 linear feet of paving of Los Sueños Trail.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Green?
So, thank you. The, the portion that's on your property of the 3100 feet is how much?
Matt, can you pull up the presentation real quick, just so everyone can get an idea? I know that Commissioner Hughes and Commissioner Bustamante were at that public hearing back in 23, but there was three others that weren't. But I'll just give a quick overview of the site, the improvements in question. That way you can just kind of have an idea. So, Matt, whenever you're ready. Okay, keep going, Matt. Keep going, keep going, keep going, right there, right there. That's perfect. So if you see that blue line there, Commissioners, anything north of basically the, the, where our property is, that piece that says area to be paved, that whole blue section there is within our property, if you will. Anything north of that line, which I think says 06, back up to Cloud March, is an off-site improvement. And I believe that's the 600 feet, 700 feet of off-site improvements that we're doing voluntarily, just so there's not a gap in pavement. You know, if we just paved our section, it wouldn't make sense. So like I said, one of the reasons for this extension is our project engineer has retired and moved. We are currently searching for a new project engineer. We're trying to secure the letter of credits required to do these improvements. It's gone up significantly since 2003. We may have bitten off a little more than we anticipated, but we're still going to honor the commitment that was made and self-imposed. So we're just asking for a little bit more time. We have to basically establish a whole new civil team and get those plans approved through the county and then get our letter of credit where we can record the plat and begin construction.
So the road, the road designs are not ready to go?
They are ready to go. They're just done through a different engineer who has since retired. Ultimately, we're trying to get a new engineer because we want to work with an engineer that's actively working. So he may pick up where the other engineer left off, but ultimately, we've worked closely with John and his staff and came up with a really good road plan that also has a trail alongside it and has, you know, the paving and drainage. And it's, it really went through the wringer the first time around.
You know, I could see expectations set that, that, you know, the neighborhood thought? You know, I could see expectations set that, that, you know, the neighborhood thought that it was going to get this. And so that's, to me, what we're trying to uphold here is that the neighbors said, you were going to get this road done. Whether you develop this thing or not, that's your problem, but your commitment to get this there.
Ultimately, we couldn't, Commissioner Green, do anything without a recorded plat. So we need to, to secure our financial guarantee, get everything in order, record our plat. So we've been in a standstill in order, until we get that done.
Is there a willingness to do this roadwork next summer as a, like, it's too late for this year?
I, I think ultimately, this was a gesture of good faith by the developer to do this and pick up that off-site pavement and his pavement. I think we're asking for the 36 months and if it's not, you know, we'll do it within that timeframe, if possible, in accordance with the code.
We'll leave it to Commissioner Kokari Stone to seal the deal. But that would be, my encouragement would be sort of a date certain to try to expedite that part, get these.
As mentioned, we're following the code and trying to do it in the, in the right way. And we're, like I said, trying to be good neighbors out here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone online? Public hearing is now closed. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward. Case number 21-5011, Suerte del Sur LLC, to extend the time, month time extension of the previously approved Rancho Cielo Grande preliminary plat and final plat approval for a 12-lot residential subdivision.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is that with conditions previously imposed by staff, just for the record?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll second it, affirming the?
Sorry, let's allow the Commissioner to?
I'm going to just re-clarify. I'd like to move forward the case number 21-5011, Suerte del Sur LLC application with the time extension, including the conditions imposed by our county staff, for the record.
A second?
And I'm still a second.
Second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Are there any announcements? If there are no further announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I am motioning.
You sure you don't want to recess and reconvene?
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm having an executive withdrawal.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're free. See you.
Get some rest.